Yeah, sorry, I'm. I have my, uh, I'm using two, I'm at the office using two monitors, so I'm. Keeping this camera off so I can navigate.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I thought it was your voice, but I just wanted to make sure. All right, so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm the one to start the meeting, so I guess could we please start recording?
Yes, so yeah, we're recording.
Okay, great. So, uh, the purpose of this meeting this evening is for the Capitol Budget Commission of the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the, um, departments of presentations and see if what they submitted to us um, in our estimation line up with the P O C D Plan Conservation and Development, otherwise known as the Master Plan, so. Um, I went back, you know, over the department recommendations and just, you know, said yes or no in my mind and made a list. And I don't know, do we want to have any discussion about all of these, or do we just want to review, like do Lou or Darius, do you guys have comments that you'd like to make about anything?
I, I only came up with three items. Um, on, uh, the entire list. So I'd be, I'd be interested in what you've come up with and what Darius has come up with. Um, I'm not, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure that it's necessary to go through the entire list. We could simply go through those items that the three of us feel um, don't adhere to the P O C D.
I think that's probably the quickest way to do it. I'm happy. I have the spreadsheet. We have, we basically, we took it and put it into an Excel spreadsheet, so I can pull that up on the screen if you want, and we can just look at those and then comment, and I can fill right in that preferable.
No, I mean, go ahead. I'll, I'll start if, if, um, there were three things that I found three, um, recommendations or requests that didn't really follow. Wasn't necessarily the P O C D, but I felt that they shouldn't be in the capital budget, so I'll just start by saying that, that, um, economic development, um, they have a $3.1 million in ARPA money and um, the Special Events Coordinator, I don't know why something like that should come out of a capital budget. To me, that seems like something in the operating budget. If that's what the Common Council wants to include, great, um, put it in there. But to me, it's not a capital thing. That's, um, number four.
Tammy, I don't have a number on mine, but I also, under, under Economic and Community Development, I have the $150,000 for the special events, which included the, um, uh, Christmas party and another event.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, clearly, i- i- in my view, that's not a P O C D item.
Correct.
So I just want to flag which items we're talking about. You guys can see the screen with the spreadsheet.
I can see it, but I can't read it, Steve. Can you make it larger?
Yeah. Um, Steve, is that in order of our book? Because it's E1 under the tabs in the workbook?
That's a good question. I have to pull the book up to check.
Alright.
It's, they're all grouped by, um, they're all grouped by the, the departments. So they should be pretty clear.
Let me try to turn on my, or I can minimize you guys and pull it up on my screen. It's very hard to read that, um, even if you have it on your own a separate computer with everything in there. Sorry, let me see if I can pull it up on my other one. Steve, I don't know if there is ever a way to make this book or this presentation in a more organized format, so that the people giving the information and the people receiving the information have it in the same order, or that it can be just numbered one through 10, or, you know, whatever it is, because there are 16 tabs, but they're not really numbered, they're not in alphabetical order, they're nothing. And I don't know why historically it's been this way forever.
Steve, can, can you bring it up a bit? Uh, because I think the items are under redevelopment.
No.
I've got the, I've got the special events one here, you see that?
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
That's right. And here, I'll read to you what they are. Hold on. Lou, do you have your book?
I do have my book.
Okay, so that way you, Darius, Darius, you have your book, right?
I do, and I also have a printed version of the spread.
Okay, oh, that's helpful. I didn't do that. I should have. Um, so it's E1 in the book, Lou.
Okay.
And it's 150,000. Um, and they were looking for streetscape improvements, trash cans, banners, special events coordinator, and musicians.
I've got it.
Okay, and Darius, what's your opinion on this particular, um, item?
Oh, I concur.
Okay.
I concur that it's more of an half.
Alright, great. So Steve, since we all concur, what do we then do? Do you take notes on this, or do I have to take notes on?
So I was gonna mark in the sheet, make sure I, so I think I'm highlighting the right one here correctly?
That's correct.
You are.
Okay, so I can do something like this, um. So I have a column here, um, and I can just put a no, and then your comment would be item should be placed, um, within capital budget, I mean operating.
No, operating.
Operating, yeah.
And frankly, I thi- I think they said as much. Uh, but then qualified it by saying, um, um, that they were advised uh, by the city to put it in the capital budget.
Right. And I, I guess, too, I don't want to misspeak, but the ARPA funds of $9 million were given to the city. It wasn't just given to this particular, uh, department, but they still have $3.1 million of that, of those funds. I mean, I think, you know, the goal of the funding is to support place making and business support enhancements, but that's not, to me, those are more capital.
My, um, my second item was under the library.
Okay.
And I don't have a reference for it.
Alright, hold on, I'll grab my library tab. Or at the back, it's F2 in the big notebook.
Okay.
And they had, they had quite a few requests.
Right, and I had, uh, two, I think, two concerns about, uh, the library.
Okay. Uh, do you want me to read them to you? Would that help, Lou?
No, I can tell you, I can tell you what they are. Um, one is, uh, the digitization of the Norwalk hour. I think it's a, it's a very worthy, um, item, and it should be funded. But it's not a capital item. It's an operating item.
Well, I, having been on the Planning Commission and listened to this request for many years now, um, they, they always had it in the capital. Maybe one could say because it's a permanent part of their collection, it's not an operating expense, and this will be the final go around of this. They're, they're going to be done. I mean, it's I don't know if that.
Well, in fact, what Sherrell said is going forward, it's going to be part of their regular operating budget.
Yeah. But they'll just incorporate it in, like they're doing all of these back years for this.
Exactly, and I, again, I, I understand that, I support it. Um, so that it's not that I don't support, uh, the item, I just um, can't agree that, uh, it belongs as a capital, uh, item.
Okay, um, my most, I
And
if you go the way.
The, the, the third item I had, um, I believe is $18,000 for outdoor furniture. Also for the library, Steve, can you go to that? And the, the reason for that, um, I, again, uh, so I'm very supportive of the item itself, but I think that she was basically asking us to move that from next year's budget into this year's budget, and we have no authority to do that.
That's this request I have up here.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And my recollection, uh, you know, you, i- i- in the book is, uh, that that is not in this year's budget, it's in next year's budget. And again, I, if I'm correct in that, we don't, we don't have the authority to move money from one year to the next.
I would agree.
But let, we should double check to make sure that I'm speaking correctly. I'm going.
You are.
Yeah, okay.
And although it was interesting that somebody, one of the people for the public that spoke in favor of supporting everything for the library still thought that, um, Connecticut Public TV was going to, um, you know, be merging or coming into that space next door.
Right.
And I don't think that, I think that project has been I don't think it's, uh, on
Yeah, it's been.
anytime soon.
Yeah, I believe the person who was overseeing that the discussions around
Yeah, Darius, your, um, voice is very wobbly. Could you please say that again?
Um, what was I saying again? Um, oh yeah, I believe the person overseeing that, uh, project either retired or had left, uh, C P Pub. And so then it's fallen.
Okay, so it was the person from the Connecticut Public TV that isn't there any longer. It's not that Norwalk doesn't have the interest.
Uh, yeah, that is my assessment of.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so Lou, um, Steve, I guess you can just look into her wanting to move that in, but we don't have the authority to do that.
Yeah, you know, unless that was an error, it was a mistake. Um, and, and somehow something from this year got pushed into next year incorrectly. Um, and if that's the case, then I have no problem with it.
Okay.
And that was, that was it for me.
What, um, did you make any decision on the other item?
Uh, you mean the newspaper digitization?
Yeah, I know you talked about it.
My feeling is that it's been, the, the previous years of doing this, it always has been in the capital budget, so I don't know that that makes a good argument for keeping it there, but I don't, I don't mind that it's here, and then it's done, and then they can move it into the capital budget for like $25,000 or $35,000 a year going forward. Because it's, they put in the back in the news bank, the person that does it, our archiving, 71 to 2005 is 119,000, and then they map out a payment plan of 35, 22, 22, 23 approximately for the following years. So it will be a lot less expensive going forward, so maybe they should just put that in their operating budget.
Uh, Steve, um, it's not, it, it's not up to me, but I would say that, um, decision on this should be made by a majority, so that, you know, if, if Darius agrees with Tammy that it's okay to be there, uh, then I think, um, the recommendation is, it stays there. Um, I don't, I don't have a problem with doing it on the basis of, uh, majority of us voting.
Yeah, I was just trying to look in last year's binder to see, uh, what it said, so.
If my memory serves me correctly, Darius, I that we have approved this in the past. It took a number of years for whoever the budget people to get on board with it, but once they did, then they were kind of committed to doing it all. And now this is the final last gasp, so to speak, and if it takes uh, the newspapers from 1971 to 2005, and 2005 to 2022, I guess, or 2021 maybe, have already been digitized.
I, I think too that they, they decided for whatever reason, as opposed to just doing like a $25,000, $30,000, like every year, they would just bang it all out, which is why the request is larger than, than prior years.
Okay.
Did you want to take a?
Yeah.
Vote on that particular one?
Okay. Uh, do I, do I submit, do I, um, make the vote? Or Steve, would you make the, ask us about the vote?
I, I mean, yeah, you could, well, it sounds like Mr. Schulman is, would prefer it comes out, you'd like to see it stay, so Darius, I think, can probably be the vibrant.
Okay.
Yeah, I would support leaving it in, so.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay.
All your votes would be like that at every meeting.
Um, okay, Darius, do you have one or some?
I actually had the exact same ones as the two of you of these regarding, sorry if you can get my I had questions regarding newspaper, but I think we should just move on.
Alright, um, then I have one, um, under code enforcement, the streetscape improvements. Um, I, I think that a lot of these ideas that they have really are an opportunity for private sponsorship, um, and it I'm not sure if this is where the yellow decoration along the wall there, uh, between going under I-95 and the Route 7 connector. And they're taking that down, um, it kind of troubles me that it was put up not that long ago, and now they're removing that art and asking for more money, and I think that either they can put it in capital, or they can seek sponsorship from somewhere else. Um, and that was number six, code enforcement, sorry, let me just find the right.
There's a streetscape, um, streetscape improvements with a request of $150,000.
Right, it's under E2, the next tab, after planning and zoning, if you guys are looking in your book.
I, I, I think Tammy, what, what, what I would say, um, the first part may be irrelevant, um, the, the yellow ribbon is looking very, very tired. Uh, I know they're planning on moving it, um, but it I, I don't think it enhances that space, but beyond that, um, I, I believe it, I believe what they want to do is, um, capital, uh, in nature. Um, I, I think that, uh, the days of um, acquiring sponsorships, it's not past, uh, but it's not nearly as, uh, effective as it's been in the past. It's much more difficult. I mean, the banks, um, used to be, uh, wonderful in sponsoring, uh, uh, programs throughout the city, and they've all pulled back from that. Um, I think some of the realtors, um, also have a, a considerable, um, history in doing, in doing things like that, and we're in, in, in the last couple of years, I haven't been seeing that. Um, you know, not that it doesn't exist at all. Um, you know, places like, uh, Lockwood Matthews Mansion are uh, able to, to find some sponsors, but, um, I think at, at the moment, um, hopefully it's not forever, but at the moment, um, it's really just a shadow of what it used to be.
Well, that could be. Um.
You know, the, the Transit District for, just to give you an example, um, restored seven, um, of the W P A murals uh, was able to secure federal uh, funding to be able to do that. To the best of my knowledge, and I not pointing any figures, you know, I, 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 I think, uh, during, um, um, uh, President Trump's, uh, presidency, uh, funding was substantially reduced so that programs, uh, like that um, couldn't get funded, and I, I'm, I Transit District funded the original Sono sign, it, 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 uh, funded bike shelters throughout the city, it funded other public arts. To the best of my knowledge, nothing like that has happened in the last seven years or so. Um, because of, uh, uh, I think principally federal cutbacks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I just, um, seemed to me that maybe it either should be in operating, or maybe they could get some other sources of, of funding, um, and it, it goes along a little bit with the business and development, um, and tourism. Uh, but anyway, okay, Darius, how, how do you feel?
I believe that it complies with the P O C D.
You think it does? Okay. Supports local centers of activity in neighborhoods?
Yes.
Alright, you guys can overrule me.
Yeah. Okay, and what remains, Tammy? What else is?
I believe that was it. We did the business and tourism, we did code enforcement, economic development, just let me review. Yeah, no, did anybody have any concern with anything from the Board of Ed? So it's a big one, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I didn't really either, um, there's some things in there that I think are really important, um, they can prioritize their list. Alright.
Alright, Steve, will this be, uh, an agenda item, uh, on our meeting next week?
Yes, so you guys end up having to kind of vote on, well, the commission as a whole, I should say, uh, end up having to vote on the I think it's only one item that you guys flagged as not, not being consistent. Um, I, I, I shot, tried to shoot J J a quick email to say, hey, they're moving kind of quick if you have something, so she she can't get here, she can't get here. I mean, I think worst case scenario is she had um, items that she wanted to go over, she could probably raise them during that, that, uh, agenda item, and then you guys can make a final call as a commission.
And that will just be a general conversation had by the Planning and Zoning Commission, right?
Correct, so that they'll have, um, we'll have to get them something to look at. Maybe we'll send them the sheet and then indicate, you know, the one highlighted item where the subcommittee has determined that it's not consistent, and then the board could vote on that. They could also bring up other items that they felt weren't consistent, but hopefully for the most part can take your recommendations.
Steve, there are two items. Um, there's the Economic and, uh, Community Development.
Yep, Special Events.
Right, and, um, there's the outdoor furniture.
Oh, right, okay, that, yeah, that's got a note for, um, capital request for the following.
Right.
Yeah, I got those two flagged.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then I'll, I'll report on what we discussed this evening. And, I mean, do you want me to, do you think it's worth reviewing what the departments are asking for, so that everybody on the P and Z Commission knows?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we want to encourage, uh, general discussion of, uh, the budget for fear that it gets out of control. Um, I think we ought to concentrate only on those items, um, that, uh, we're recommending are, are not appropriate.
Okay.
And if any, uh, flags were raised during their review, then I guess they don't come out specifically.
Oh yeah, that's fine. If, if another member of the commission has a concern about whether something meets the requirements of P O C D, we certainly ought to entertain that.
Exactly.
Right, so hypothetically, let's just say that who, since we've recommended that these items, um, basically shouldn't be in the capital budget, who would make the decision to move, um, business development, tourism, and economic development out of the capital budget and into the operating budget?
Well, you know, it's an interesting question. The, the, uh, the city's finance director has already issued his budget. Um, so it'd be interesting to take a look at his budget and see what his budget, uh, says about those specific items. He may have already addressed it, not for, not for our reasons, but he may have addressed it.
Uh, Steve, do you have the link to that, or can?
Yeah, this is, this should have, um, let me see, because it's got CFO recommended on.
Yep, it does.
Okay.
I'll probably, you want me to put it back up?
Yes, if you have it there, thank you.
Uh, let me get the he's got it in there, he's got the 150 every year.
Yeah.
Or at least he's got the 150 for next year.
Okay.
Right.
Yep. And what about the other one, um, that was economic, what about?
Just the library.
Yeah, the library, there's two things, there's, oh, business development and tourism, not economic development, business development. And the live.
He doesn't have the street furniture in his budget.
Right, it's out in 2018. Okay.
Yeah, so he wouldn't have even addressed it.
Alright, well, honestly, that's not the end of the world one way or the other, right? If they're doing a lot of street work down in West Avenue, it might not be great to have outdoor furniture out there anyway, because there's a lot of road dirt and stuff going on. But Steve, what, can you look up the business development and tourism line? Must be further down. Yeah, there it is. Oh, no. Arts and Culture Plan.
This is the one you guys made a word agreement on that, should be.
Right.
Okay, so it's still, it's in there.
Yes, yeah, he's got it.
So what's the total number versus, this book that we have two members gives us a total, which is frustrating for trying to look at the total for his budget?
Uh, so you're looking for the CFO that should be the, hopefully the last one, this kind of like.
It's too large.
I know, it's, it's a big spreadsheet. Seven million.
He's cut it in half.
Yep.
The, the total request, um, 73.6, he's at 42.
Okay, very good. Okay, alright, well, so, and you're going to give the, everybody on P and Z this spreadsheet, right?
Yeah, and then we'll do a quick little memo and then some kind of resolution that'll go along with.
Okay. So, I mean, really, there's not, nothing for us um, to do besides these recommendations. Unless.
Unless there are other items.
Right, okay.
Alright, then, we all get together again, uh, next Wednesday?
Correct.
Yeah, the 15th. And that's just our regular meeting. Alright.
Right, so then I think you'll end up canceling uh, March 1st and just moving March 1st to March 2nd.
Right, and, and just to confirm, there's a meeting on the 22nd?
Correct.
And the March 1st meeting? Wait, what did you say about March 1?
March 1 is your regular, regularly scheduled meeting, so we'll probably end up canceling that, and then just having a special meeting on March 2nd.
Okay. Meetings. And that'll be at the sixth normal, what time?
I think it's, yeah, planned for six. I think it's, yeah, planned for six o'clock.
Six, all right, I'll be late to that, I'll be there at seven fifteen.
I mean, we could start it at seven, I just don't know what that does for them.
Now do it, do it at the regular time, but, uh, put, put Tammy's report, um, late in the agenda.
Right, that would be helpful.
Well, Tammy's report will be on the next, uh, you, you're handling that at March.
Oh yeah, but it'll already be done, Lou.
Or, I'm sorry, trinary fifteen.
Okay. Okay. Then we're done.
Tammy, thank, thank you, thank you for handling this, I know it's been very awkward. Um, but despite that, it's still been a lot of work and I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I, I do find it very interesting to go over all of this, I, I really um, have an appreciation for what the department heads do and what the different departments do. Um, but I'm not sure that this process is sort of uh, functions that well, because it's a tremendous amount of time and what to with, if the, uh, chief financial officer just gets to do what he does, then, you know, we really, I don't feel like we had a tremendous amount of input. You know, three hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff on a seventy two million dollar request, so. Anyway.
I, I, I agree with you.
I concur as well.
Yeah, um, so I don't know, Steve, if if this is useful or not.
Yeah, I yeah, it's a good question, because there is the charter revision going on. Um, so you have the, the, the public hearing that you have to, you have to hold one per the charter, so you'd have to take that piece out of the charter, I think we could have it be more effective if we did this before the, the public hearing, I think that would give it a little more emphasis, but I think the other thing you guys could do, which I think we ended up doing last year, was if you had specific projects you felt were particularly important or particularly worthy, you could pass your recommendation on to the mayor for that to say, look, this is, you know, or even if, if the CFO took something out, I think you could probably request that to get put back in. It's because it's not binding on anybody, but it, maybe it adds a little weight to somebody's argument.
Well, maybe that, maybe the process then is, it could be reversed. So let the CFO have the first crack at it, because I don't know, was he listening in on all of the department presentations in our meeting? Or does he get them separately, you know, from somebody else? Okay, so he hears them separately, and then if he made his cuts, and then we could go back and say this is what we think, because that's kind of the way it used to work, um, because otherwise, you know, I, I would like for the public to be able to speak to, and, you know, that meeting, never, two meetings ago, there were people there that clearly got a message from the Board of Ed that they needed to call, and all of the elementary school, um, P T O parents, presidents, all called in, but nobody else called in about anything, so was that, it, it wasn't just coincidental that it happened that way, and so how does the public get to speak on any of this? Other, other than that, and then we told them that they really weren't talking about what we were supposed to listen to, which must have been infuriating to them. Right?
Yeah, and, and then the other part of it, I think, is the way the charter is set up, the, the order of when you have to do things is kind of set, so there's time limits that might be actually right within the charter in terms of you have to get your report back to the mayor by such a date, so that's something that could be altered, but I think it, it could be more useful than it is, but I think the way it's set up with the time constraints you're working under, you're a little bit limited on, on your, the effect it has.
I see, yeah, so maybe the charter needs to be adjusted, which I know is a very difficult thing to change anything in the charter, but, um.
I know, um, the town clerk is a member of the committee looking at that, so we could always talk to him and say, hey, what's the process for getting some input?
Oh, you mean to change, to change the charter, to tweak it, to make this process work better?
Yeah, to line up with what you to line up to give you guys some actual impact.
Okay, yeah, well, uh, because otherwise, I, I really, I mean, I don't like to say this, but otherwise, why are we doing this?
Right.
It's interesting, you know, other than I can sit and look at the Zoom and stare at the screen for so long, you know? I mean, you, they used to pack the community room at City Hall when the public wanted to come out and speak on something that they were in favor of, and you know, it's usually the young people from the board for items on the Board of Ed that come out, the sports fields and stuff like that. Um, but at least you got to hear what they had to say, and they felt like they were having a voice there, to me, there's no voice in this. Do you guys see?
Yeah, I know you're, about that piece on. The, the tricky part was, you know, and the problematic part with, with the process as a whole, not just what the planning commission did was that I think that the greatest amount of public input came from those meetings, from what I observed, but then it had the least amount of impact on the actual budget. Just because that you guys would put a budget together, but it was like, it was not binding on anybody, so then the the, you know, mayor did his with the CFO, and then there was a whole other process where it was like other conversations going on that you guys weren't privy to.
Yeah. Well, do you think it's worth a conversation, say, with Tom Livingston, because isn't he the is he the chartered person on the common council that would make, suggest making adjustments or?
Yeah, I, I think Tom, yeah, I, that's a good point, I think he is kind of one of the ones pushing for the revision, so it'd be good to start to have a conversation with him to see if we could iron out this step in the process.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to have at least a conversation with him, um, I don't know if you guys want to participate in that or, um.
Perfectly appropriate for you to have that conversation as chairman of the committee.
Okay, very good, I will do that as chairman of this committee.
I just wanted to point out that there's somebody from the public with their hand up, we don't have public comment on, it's not, not a public hearing, it's, it's councilman, um, ultimate, I don't know if you wanted to, anybody speak, I mean, it's.
I, I don't, what, I don't, I, unfortunately, I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, that's another thing about these Zoom meetings that I find a little tricky is that we can see who's on, but we can't see if there's, we can, you know, see who, how many attendees, but we have no idea who's out there waiting or listening, and maybe they want to say something, but they can't. And that's kind of frustrating to them, right?
But even if, if, if we were doing, we were doing this as a, um, meeting in person, um, it's still not, uh, a, a meeting with public comment.
Oh, okay.
But you're right, I mean, we can see, uh, sometimes that there are fifty people at a meeting. Uh, and, uh, only, only twelve or thirteen people. Um, the ones on screen are the ones that we know.
Right, and we don't see any names, nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
You could press participants and then it will bring it up to you.
Where's that? Oh, there, I see, oh.
No, that doesn't, unfortunately, Darius, it only shows you the people who are uh, whose faces we can see.
On, on one side, and then I think it says panelist on one, on the left, and then attendees on the other.
Let me take a look.
Oh, it does, you're right, Darius, thank you. So we see.
Okay, so there are two attendees.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, my apologies.
Me too, thank you for that, whenever God's.
That's great to know.
Something new every day.
Yeah. Should have told us that sooner, Darius. Um, okay, well, we apologize to the two people that are out there that were not really allowed to let you speak, I don't know.
But if you want, if you want to address us in some way, please feel free to put something in writing to, um, uh, Ms. Langellis.
Yes, or to Steve Kleppen, and then he will send it to all three of us.
Yeah, just, just keep in mind that the, the, the public hearing on the capital budget closed, so we can't we can't take any information in on that for consideration.
Right.
Right, but people still could feel like their voice could get hurt.
All right, Steve, and we will all get together again, uh, next week.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll email JJ just to give her a heads, I don't have her phone number to call her, but I'll let her shoot her email saying we wrapped up early, and if she has specific items she wants to or had questions about, I'll, I'll let her know about the two items you guys flagged. And then, um, if she has items she wants to go over, then she can just bring them up at the meeting on the fifteenth, and then the commission can vote on it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so what? I don't know if I need a motion to adjourn this, oh, sorry, Garius.
I just had one final question to the group and, uh, mostly to Steve, that, uh, can we as a subcommittee forward our, uh, thoughts or questions pertaining to the budget process to the council?
Yeah, so what happens after this is well, after the commission votes next week, we'll put a memo together, and then, I mean, if there's no more than two items, it will probably be a pretty simple memo. Um, where we'll say the commission recommended, you know, we'll specify, so it's clear what we're saying. Item X should not be included in the capital budget because of it's not, uh, it felt it's an operational item, not a capital item. And the second one would be that the the library, you know, because it's not proposed for fiscal year, uh.
But I assume, Steve, we can also express our frustration uh, with the process itself.
Yeah, you can do that, and then if you're like, and, and if there are projects that you feel, um, particularly strong about, then you could also say that, you know, we're, we're really big on sidewalks and there's proposed for this project, so you could recommend that those get you know, get some, a special consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a good week.
Thank you, everybody.
Do we need a motion or?
Well, yeah, I started to ask that. Do we need a motion to adjourn, Steve?
Yeah.
Darius moves, I second.
Okay, all in favor. Okay, thanks, everybody, bye. Yep.